We'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least seventy-two hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. And I'm going to amend that, we are going to actually go back into workshop, so if there was something on the workshop you were interested in, it will continue after this meeting. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased you've taken time this evening to join us. We're very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest and support of our students. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. We'll begin this board meeting as we do with all of our board meetings, with pledges of allegiance to the American flag, the Texas flag, and a moment of silence. Today, we have the pleasure of having representatives from all three College Station ISD campuses, and as I call your name, would you please come forward? From A&amp;M Consolidated High School, we have Ellie Garrett and Emily Hawthorne? No, Lacy Hawthorne. I know Lacy. From College Station High School, we have Sam Crockett and Bobby Lockett. And from College View, we have Treasure Ford, Adrian Garcia, and Delaney Ward.
If you would, please rise for the assignment of the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in the Texas pledge.
Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
You guys get to take pictures with the board. Some of you are taller, board members. So now we have recognitions for this evening. It's our pleasure, College Station ISD, to recognize high school students who have done extremely well in preparation for college, specifically on the PSAT, our National Merit Scholarship Program. We have three different awards that we're going to recognize tonight. So I will begin with our National Merit semifinalist. A total of thirteen College Station ISD seniors were recently named semifinalists in the sixty-third annual National Merit Scholarship Program announced by the National Merit Scholar Corporation. The thirteen CSISD students are now in a pool of approximately sixteen thousand semifinalists nationwide who are competing for seventy-five hundred National Merit Scholarships worth a total of approximately thirty-two million dollars. About ninety percent of the semifinalists are expected to be named finalists, and of those, around half will win a National Merit Scholarship and earn the prestigious National Merit Scholar title. Scholarship winners for 2018 will be announced in a series of press releases beginning in April and concluding in May. Since 2003, College Station ISD has had one hundred and eighty-nine National Merit semifinalists, and has averaged an astounding twelve point six National Merit semifinalists per year during that time. Our 2017 National Merit semifinalists are...
All right, here we go. Anna Bardenhagen.
Come on up. Oh, sorry. Come on up and go and shake everybody's hand.
Ling Yi Fu. Lacy Hawthorne. Oh, oh, sorry. I'm sorry, come on up, Ling Yi.
And this is Lacy Hawthorne.
Ilum Thompson. Grace Wu. Sarah Yao.
National Merit Letters of Commendation. Twenty-seven College Station ISD students received a letter of commendation from the National Merit Scholarship Program. Approximately thirty-four thousand committed students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2017 competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards, committed students place among the top five percent of one point five million students, the top one point, top five percent of one point five million students who entered the competition by taking the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Our National Merit committed scholars are...
Mark Cahill. Shiranji Darba. I'd like to point out that these are very busy people that are on these lists, so... Cassie He. John Ives. Jackson Lacy. Ginny Liu. Matthew Manley. Mason Mincher. Elizabeth Palazolo. Cullen Perdowski. Hayden Stelges.
And finally, our National Hispanic Scholars. In addition to the thirteen National Merit semifinalists named earlier, five CSISD students received a National Hispanic Scholar Distinction. The College Board's National Hispanic Recognition Program identifies academically outstanding Hispanic and Latino high school students. Each year, the NHRP honors about five thousand of the high-scoring students from over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand Hispanic and Latino juniors who take the PSAT. These students are from the United States, Puerto Rico, the US Virgin Islands, Guam, the Mariana Islands, and the Marshall Islands, as well as US citizens attending schools abroad. Approximately two hundred of the top-scoring PAA students from Puerto Rico are also included. We have five National Hispanic Scholars, and they are...
Tobias Dorr Garcia.
And that concludes all three awards. I just would like to take a moment to say congratulations to these students, these fine students, and the work that they've been doing to get to this, to get this momentous part. Congratulations to the parents, who maybe as a result of this may have to pay a little less to go to college. That would be great, wouldn't it? I would like to say, though, give an opportunity for the parents and grandparents and other family members who are in the audience to help support their kids, if you'd stand at this time so we could recognize you. We know that kids' success doesn't happen in a vacuum, and it's because of high expectations and hard work and the support that they have in their homes. We thank you for sharing your kids with us as you have, and we look forward to seeing what all these great students are going to do when they go to college. So with that, Dr. Yoken, that ends our recognitions for this evening.
While we're getting settled, I'd like to recognize the artwork that was provided in the boardroom as a decoration by A&amp;M Consolidated High School, College Station High School, and College View High School. With that, we'll move to item D, the Consent Agenda. The items on consent are G, J-1, J-2, J-3, J-4, J-5, J-6, J-7, J-8, J-9, and J-10. Does anybody have anything they'd like to pull off the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
My second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to item E-1 and receive reports from related to the trustee continuing education hours. Dr. Ely?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. There has been a change in state law regarding the reporting, public reporting of hours and whether or not the board members have received the hours as mandated by the Texas Education Code. That has moved that from the last meeting of the calendar year to the meeting immediately, excuse me, preceding an election. So with that being the case, so we do have an election coming up in November, Ms. Horn has some information she needs to read into the minutes. Ms. Horn?
Thank you. Since 1986, the State Board of Education rule has required that a public announcement be made each year of the names of the board members who have completed the required continuing education hours and who are deficient. The annual required continuing education is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member under State Board of Education rule. The president shall cause the minutes of the local board to reflect the information. Senate Bill 1566 passed in the eighty-fifth legislative session amended the Texas Education Code, Section 11.159, Section B, which changed the report, changed the reporting board training hours from the last regular meeting of the calendar year to the meeting held before an election of trustees. The minutes must now reflect whether each trustee has met or is deficient in meeting the training required for the trustee as of the first anniversary of the date of the trustee's election or appointment. All seven of the College Station ISD trustees have met the required training as of the first anniversary of their election to the College Station ISD Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item E-2 and see whether or not anyone on the board has anything they'd like to share with the rest of the group. Okay, Dr. Ely, how about you?
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. Just a couple of upcoming events, make sure folks in the community are aware. We have, we endeavor to have two management oversight workshops a year to talk about some of the major areas where the school district spends money. Our next one coming up is regards to the transportation program, and we will be hosting, we'll be having that management oversight workshop on Monday, October the thirtieth, at 3:00 PM at the Transportation Center, Room B. So we're excited to delve in there for a couple hours and talk about everything that goes into transportation for College Station ISD, and we invite people to come and hear that discussion. Do also want to make note for the public that there is a slight deviation from our regularly scheduled board meetings for the November meeting. As most people are aware, we meet as a board on the third Tuesday of the month, since in November, the third Tuesday of the month is that Tuesday prior to a five-day weekend and prior to Thanksgiving. The board this summer approved a schedule to move the board meeting until Tuesday, November fourteenth. So it'll be one week earlier, Tuesday, November fourteenth will be our next board meeting, so please update your calendars as you need to. And so those are a couple of the upcoming events that we have in College Station ISD.
Great, thank you very much. Item F, Hearing of Citizens. Do we have any cards? Okay, Stuart Mapur. Mr. Mapur, you'll be given three minutes as set by Ms. Horn, and she will let you know if, for some reason, you were to extend beyond that. If you please state your name and your address.
And that's good right there. Certainly. That'd be perfect.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Stuart Mapur. I work for C&amp;G for America. We're located at 1773 Westboro Drive, Katy, Texas. Dr. Early and members of the board, thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Stuart Mapur. I do business development for C&amp;G for America. We are headquartered in Katy and currently have five compressed natural gas fueling stations in Texas, including one in Bryan located at 2890 North Harvey Mitchell Parkway at the Big Gas Truck Stop. We are in natural gas, and it's being more widely used across the country as an economical clean burning fuel for school buses. Just three weeks ago, Fort Ben ISD, board southwest of Houston, approved the fueling of thirty new C&amp;G buses with us. They have started fueling at our Katy station, too. We build a mobile C&amp;G facility at their bus facility in Hodges Bend. We are scheduled to start building this mobile facility within a month, and it should take about a month to construct. As a result of the VW settlement of Texas, in Texas, they will have a sheer of two-hundred-six million dollars of settlement funds. Funds may be used to pay approximately twenty-five percent of the cost of each school bus. This is what is being proposed. In fact, I talked to the governor's office today on this very subject. In the handout packet, you will find detailed information, including the diagram of the mobile facility. Also, it contains information about the VW settlement, which in Texas will be administered by Governor Abbott, as I mentioned earlier, and other grants available through Texas Admissions Reduction Plan, known as TERP. So be a hero to the taxpayers of College Station ISD District. Drive clean burning, quiet, no smell C&amp;G buses to your neighborhood's lead Volkswagen possibly pay for a portion of the school buses. No need for expensive upfront capital costs of building a compressor station. We can deliver the C&amp;G to your transport center and fill multiple buses at a time. The Fort Ben drivers just love this, and they get it by assignment and merit of how they're doing as a bus driver. They just love the C&amp;G bus. I presented these proposals to Katy ISD, Austin ISD, last night in Bryan, Seifir, and Lamar ISD. They are very interested in further discussions. Please take a heart look at this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to item H-1, receive report on the CSISD Community Education. Dr. Ely?
Madam President, members of the board, as you know, we come before you six times a year to talk about some of the great programs that we have going on in College Station ISD, and community education is certainly one of those great programs that we have. They take care of numerous kids, and I'm sure we'll find out here shortly how many, both after school, every day, in all of our intermediate schools and elementary schools, and then have a very robust Kids Club program over the summer. We're very excited to have Chad Gardner here, Director of, excuse me, Community Education, to talk a little bit about the great things we're doing. Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. Thanks for your time tonight. I'm going to talk to you about community ed. Basically, two different programs. We've got the Kids Club program, which is after-school during the school year, and our Summer Day Camp program, which runs the entirety of the summer. We do go full, we go year-round, so we don't, we never stop. Looking at Kids Club, our after-school program, I am going to tell you a little bit about how many kids we have and stuff. This is our thirtieth year, so we're celebrating thirty years in College Station. We started in 1987 as a need in the community for latchkey kids. And so from 2014 is when the school district took over sole custody of the program. Before that, we were a joint venture with the city. But in that entirety, all of our staff have always been employees of College Station ISD. When you look at our schools, we currently have and broke fourteen hundred kids this year, so we now have fourteen hundred and three kids after-school on twelve campuses. So we operate out of all the elementaries and all three intermediate schools. Currently, that's about ten percent of the CSISD student population. We have about twenty percent of K through six after-school, whether it's from the time of about three o'clock to six PM, Monday through Friday. And then we also do have some kids who qualify for free and reduced lunch. As far as campuses go, we currently have three campuses that are at our max capacity of one hundred and sixty students. Three of those campuses have waiting lists. Our largest waiting list is seventy, and that's at Greens Prairie. Greens Prairie has been one that has been in a waiting list except for the first year that it opened. Spring Creek has grown in about the same capacity. We start the first year out with about a hundred and twenty kids, and then we jump to our one sixty in year two or three. So if we were to go to capacity with putting all seventy of those kids in after-school at Greens Prairie, we'd be well over two hundred kids at Greens Prairie Elementary. Currently, don't have the capacity to do that, but we do have a significant waiting list at Greens Prairie. So that's just Greens Prairie has been one that's hammered us for years on that. We currently have one hundred and sixty-seven staff. We are hiring and training all of the time, so we go, we run year-round, but we hire and train all the time. Part of that is because of our, just our population that we have for our staff, mostly college kids. I'll talk about staff here in a second, but we do, we hire and train all the time. So we're about to stop. We're about to stop hiring for the fall, so we can put out applications in November to hire for the spring. So operation times, elementary three oh five to six, we get kids at three oh five. Intermediate, we get kids at three fifty, we go till six fifteen. Our staff are there a little bit later than that. Operation, you know, basically, we follow a CSIC calendar. Early release, as soon as we get early release, we start when school ends on the day. So early release, if we release school at twelve thirty, we start Kids Club at twelve thirty. All days, staff development days for us, we run all day. So we open at seven thirty in the morning and we close at six. We are only on one campus during the school year, and with that, we only have a max of about a hundred and forty kids on that day. So tuition for us, we're pretty reasonably priced compared to most everybody else in Bryan College Station. We do have a thirty-five dollar registration fee, and it does cost one twenty-five per month for each family, for the students. And we do have reduced rates for kids who qualify for reduced and free lunch. All right, so looking at summer camp. Summer Day Camp, we, summer camp started a little bit earlier, so 1986 is when summer camp started. We operate on one campus for a number of years. We split to two campuses in 1999. 2011 was our first year to be licensed as a childcare facility and program through the Department of Family Protective Services. So that was a change for us. That was a change through the law in the state of Texas why we did that. So looking at our facilities, we operate on two campuses in the summertime. So typically try and say one on kind of the north side of town, one on the south side of town. A lot of times, that's determined by what else is going on in the school district. You guys hear all the time about what we have going on in the summer. I mean, you heard we've got stuff going on in campuses this summer. Then we have other programs that go on in the summertime in the school district, too. So we move from time to time, the last three years, we've been on the same campuses. I'm pretty sure we'll probably be on different campuses this next summer, but we'll see. So we operate in the summertime, a little less kids, too. We have four hundred to about four hundred and fifty kids each week, and that's total. That's split off into two campuses. We operate out of two camps on each campus. So we have K through two and three through six on each campus. They operate independently, they do different stuff, different programming, different staff, all under the same umbrella. So operation for us, we do, we, the Monday after school, mostly Monday after school ends, we start. We close down Wednesday or Tuesday or whatever before staff development begins for CSISD, and then we start Kids Club all days on those days. So really, there's not a stop time for us. We do operate in the summer, seven fifteen to six, Monday through Friday. We do have a half-day program, AM and PM half-day for kids, and our tuition is thirty-five dollar registration fee, a hundred and thirty dollars for junior club, which is K through two, three through six is a hundred and forty for a full-day kid. All right, so field trips, it'll flip through some stuff here. You guys can look at some different things that we do. We do a lot of different things, and this is one thing that sets us apart from other camps and stuff that are going on in the program and Bryan College Station, but also from Kids Club. So we do take some big trips. We rely on CSISD transportation, like we go out of town, like weekly. I mean, this is not like, oh, every once in a while. Every week, we go somewhere out of town, so, I mean, some of our trips are all day. We leave at seven and we get back at seven, you know, and so, but it's a lot of fun. Love it. Crew members, so our kids at our junior high age, early high school, don't qualify to work for us, fourteen to seventeen, can be crew members, volunteer. It's great stuff for the resume. They come in and learn how to work with kids and also to possibly work for us in the future. So it's a great program for us to have. They can operate out of two weeks at a time. Some of them are there for, with us almost the whole summer, you know. All right, so looking at both programs combined, some of that everything has, biggest thing is we want to provide a safe, fun recreational enrichment program for our kids after-school and in the summertime. Programming is developed between, by our staff, so we don't have a specific curriculum that we hand out from our office, but it does come from our staff. We do look at age and development, appropriate activities, and we do have stuff that we want to run, we want kids to run around and play, you know. Clubs and morning activities are enrichment-based activities. I'll throw some different stuff up. Kids Club, we do those once a week for six weeks at a time. Summer Camp, we do it every morning, so that's what our morning activities are, so five days a week. That's just kind of a few different selections of different things that our kids can choose over the summertime, so it's a choice-based. for our kids. Some of it's athletics. So it's anything from athletics to engineering to strategy, improv, drawing, painting. Lots of fun stuff.
Rugby?
Yeah. So rugby and cricket too. I didn't put that on there. So we do, we get staff from all over. So most of our staff are college-age kids. So we get, we get staff from all over that played rugby in high school or played rugby in a different country or played cricket in a different country. And so a couple of years ago, when we started doing rugby, it was hard to find rugby stuff because it really, you didn't have it here. We like trying to find lacrosse stuff in College Station right now. And so we had to buy stuff online, but now you can buy rugby balls at Academy, you know. But yeah, rugby, cricket. If you like quidditch, we do that too, you know. Run around with a broom, you know. Alright, so for staffing, full-time staff, you have myself, Lindsay Saracano is our coordinator for the programs, and Ricky Mesa, who just, we just added this year, is our third person as far as full-time staff. And then Sarah Foster is our secretary in the office. So there's just, there's four of us in the office every, every morning. But the rest of our staff join us shortly in the afternoon. So if you want a fun time in the afternoon, you can always stop by our office. It's always lively because all of our college kids start coming in. As far as campuses go, we run a supervisor, assistant supervisor. We have an administrative assistant who works up front, does parent greeting, works with the parents. It's kind of our face of our program, which is something that we didn't have if some of you guys had, you know, kids years and years ago. And Kids Club is something new that we added. It's a very important position for us. We do want to operate on a 1 to 12 ratio at our worst. At our best, we start, we'd staff on about a 1 to 10. So one of our greatest assets is our staff. So some of our kids, we take from high school to becoming teachers in CSISD. I mean, really, they started with us. They were actually, some of them were campers or Kids Clubbers and now work for us in College Station ISD. Most of our staff are about 18 to 24 years old. We don't look specifically for education majors. And that's because our other majors bring stuff that they're passionate about that our kids would need to learn about. But we want to have some education majors too because we'd like for them to work for us in College Station ISD. Or we'd like for them to find out that education is not where they need to be and they need to change majors. So we do have that. We have some people that come in that are different majors and then decide, hey, I'd like to teach. So some of our staff are former, former Kids Clubbers, some are former campers. Some of our staff I had as kids, you know, I had when I worked college and when I was in college and worked Kids Club years ago, I had as like kindergartners, you know. It's crazy to see them all grown up now. A lot of our staff, it's their first job. It's their first opportunity to work with kids and lead groups. So currently, right now, former staff on 12 of our 17 campuses started working with Kids Club or Summer Camp. So it's, we used to have a little bit more, but you know, they move. And I wish I had, I thought about it today, I wish I had, you know, some, an idea to tell you about other districts in the state of Texas where we have staff that are working and teaching. So-
I have one that is the coordinator at, for Plugerville, who started as a club person here, worked through, and is now the assistant coordinator in the Plugerville After School Program.
It's, it's, I mean, it's really, I mean, it's a great, it's a great job. It really is. But it gives people a lot of experience working with people, you know. I mean, there's a lot of things that you learn from this job that you wouldn't learn otherwise. I mean, public speaking is one, you know. But some of it is how to be a parent or how not to be a parent, you know. You know, how to just work with groups, lead groups, small groups, large groups, you know. But for some of our staff too, one of our greatest challenges is our staff. They are mostly all college kids. So at most, a lot of our staff are only here for about a year, year and a half. So we have a lot of turnover. So that's why we hire and train a lot. But as a district, we look at jobs for a year. We want to hire somebody who's going to be available in August and work through May 31st. College kids, their schedule changes in January. You know, some of our majors, like RPTS would be great, but a lot of times upper-level classes are in the afternoons for youth development. Education majors are awesome, but then you run into junior and senior methods and student teaching. Yeah. So things change for our staff, but we want to, we want them to, we want to prepare them for what they're doing after they're done with us. Because they are, they're going to be done with us unless they're crazy and come back like myself and Lindsay and Ricky. You know, struggle for some of our staff is it's their first job. Staff development is difficult for us because on a normal staff development day, our staff are in school. So all of our staff development is done at night, you know, except for in August and in January, you know, because they don't have school yet. So we start early in the morning and we work through the day. And two, it's our staff development typically doesn't take place on a campus. So it's a lot of imagination for our staff. Like imagine what this hallway is going to look like. Imagine what a gymnasium looks like. Imagine what it looks like in their, imagining in their heads what, where they went to school, which may look completely different. Space for training is always difficult for us too because we have a large, we have a large staff and we like to move. So tables and chairs are great, but we like to move. And so splitting, splitting up in small groups and stuff is difficult. So finding a place for, for training to take place is difficult for us. So we normally take over a campus when we do training in the evenings. You know, but it's a lot of fun. Alright, so some other things that our staff do, community service. So 50 men, we've been involved in 50 men for a few years. We have one Best in Show. We have one entree. So bowl-a-thon, love it. Food for Families, BCS Marathon, we volunteer for that, really for life. We're always out there. Something our staff has started doing, Thanksgiving meals. So 15 to 18 to 17 to 20, 22 meals, our staff typically hand out at Thanksgiving. They raise money for Salvation Army, Buddy Walk, Chrissy's Closet. So we have a costume drive going on right now. So if you have old costumes, feel free to drop them off at some of our campuses. District partnerships, this year, Bridges Program. It's our 18-plus program. We've partnered with them and they're helping us out. They're doing a little bit of shopping and sorting supplies and learning some life skills and that kind of stuff. It was really beneficial for us and hopefully it's beneficial for them. But it helps us tremendously. So it's really cool for them to come over and grab our list and go shop and come back and sort stuff and take over our office for a little bit. And they've been, they've been awesome to work with and help us out. So we really appreciate that. As far as our budget goes, we have a pretty significant budget for an after-school and summer camp program. It's kind of up there. Much like the district, we follow a lot of different stuff. Most of our, most of our cost is staffing. You know, other pieces, you know, snack and transportation, those are kind of our bigger things that we look at. And all of our funding comes through parent and child tuition. So if we have kids, we have money. If we don't have kids, we don't. So hopefully the kids like to come. With all of that said, any questions or comments? Anything you don't know about Kids Club or Summer Camp that you'd like to know?
No, I just, you guys do a great job and thank you for, for what you add to our community.
Yeah, I did have one question. It has to do with the, the limits on the capacity at those schools with their waiting list. I guess the, the question I have is, is what sets that capacity? Is it something that's maybe we could address or is it a harder thing like building size or something like that?
A lot of it is, I mean, who sets the capacities? We do. As far as like that 160, that's about what we feel is kind of safe for the space that we occupy. There's a lot of different factors that go into that for us. You know, our school buildings are fairly large, but also too, we have a little bit of space that we use. We use a lot of large space, gym cafeteria. We use a lot of camp space, so the computer, art, music, and we use outside. And so for our newer campuses too, the pods. But some of that too is, I mean, our teachers need to prepare for the next day too. So classroom space, you know, we don't jump into classrooms typically on a campus. Some of our campuses, we use like science labs or, or something like that. You know, so there's a lot of moving factors that go into that. Some other schools have some different clubs and stuff that go on after school as well. And then some of it comes down to staffing, you know. I have to kind of play a game there of, you know, I can get up to capacity for staff for the fall and then all of a sudden, the staff that I have on the campus where I raised my, my space and my, my kid limit can't come back because their schedule changed for the spring. You know, kids will be there, you know, but I need to make sure I have staff that are there to take care of my kids too. You know, because, and that's the thing too, it's, we're recreational enrichment based. So we want to be going and doing and moving and stuff versus let's put everybody in the cafeteria and sit at a table, you know, and hang out. So there's some different things, you know, as we look at, you know, staffing and retention of staff, that's always a big focus for us. On our, on our campus, can we spread out a little bit more? We can. And we will, we'll eliminate some of our, some of our waiting lists, you know, as we add stuff. Some other things we've, we've started looking at too is just average attendance on days. Some of our campuses, our average attendant, you know, like any other school, maybe we've got this many kids enrolled, but our average attendance may be 10 or so less, you know. We'll kind of play that game too of making sure that our kids are safe. I mean, the biggest thing is making sure our kids are safe and having a good time, but make sure our kids are safe. So hopefully that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chad.
Yeah. Thank you for your time. I mean, I took longer than normal probably, which if any of my staff would have said anything, they would have known I would take forever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So with that, the regular meeting is going to adjourn.